Is it working now? There it goes. You'll have to excuse me, I've got a little bit of a flu or a cold going on here, so don't anybody come up here and let me breathe on them. This is Monday, January 14th, regular session of the TAK City Council Meeting, Monday, January 14th, 2019. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'm going to use a little bit of a mayor's prerogative here to recognize two people on our council. One is Councilman Ryan Richard, and correct me on this because we just asked, you just won the Small Businessman of the Year for York County?
I think it's something like that.
They hadn't told me everything yet. Oh, so that was a secret I just gave up?
No.
Sorry, but congratulations for winning the Small Businessman of the Year for York County. And the other one I'd like to recognize is Heather Overman, Mayor Pro Tem. We appointed her, well, I guess she volunteered. She volunteered to be our trash czar, our recycle czar. Our recycling has kind of been thrown into a flux, and things change every day with that thing. And Heather agreed to take that on for us and just kind of let us, to brief us, let us know how it's going. And man, is it an ever-changing thing, all the time. And she's worked many, many hours, and we were so thankful that she was the one who wanted to take it. She's done a great job, so I just want to... And I'm hoping we'll have some good news about the trash here very soon, or should I say recycle?
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned. Yeah, but it's changing every day. Every time I say, "Oh, this isn't going to happen," the next day, "Oh, it changed." So I'm glad we had Heather to run that all down the ground and all that stuff. I appreciate both of you all's hard work. So item number one is public comments. I think we have a public comment. Mr. Mike Becker would like to come up, please state your name and address, and then you have, the wegnometer will be, what, three minutes?
All right.
You have three minutes to say your piece.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right. Mike Becker, I live at 364 Calming Way in Serenity Point, and as I suspect most of you know, there was a significant failure of the erosion control measures on the townhouse development last month off Stonecrest Boulevard. So I had a couple of questions. One was what actions are being taken to prevent future occurrences, because this isn't the first time we've had, in that vicinity, had erosion control measures fail. And also to remediate any sediment that found its way into the creek. And my second question is, is what steps are being taken to ensure that the developer fulfills his obligations, any remediation obligations he has, and isn't able to walk away? As you know, developers seem to go in and out of business every day and avoid liability, so I'm also curious what the city may be doing in that regard.
Thank you. Well, we've been keeping track of that. Charlie, you want to answer that? Because he's the one that emails me almost every week about that.
Sure. So additional erosion control measures have been put in place. The permanent sediment basin is not there yet, mainly because this thing is about an acre in size. It will take multiple weeks to install, and weather just has not allowed them to be able to install that. But they have added a lot of additional erosion control measures. We actually directed our engineering firm to go and take samples, soil samples, both from the lake and where the creek discharges into the lake, as well as throughout the creek bed. Hope to have that report back from them, hopefully sometime this week. If there is sediment that's gone from the site into the creek and into the lake, the developer fully understands, or the developer's contractor fully understands, they'll have to clean that up. If there's not, I, we as a city can't force them to do anything. So that's why we hired our engineer to go and check it out, instead of using some third-party engineer, to make sure that everything's the way it's supposed to be, and if it's not, then significant dollars will get spent on cleanup. So that's where things are right now, waiting on that engineering report to come back. And our staff is monitoring the site on a daily basis.
Any other comments after you heard that?
Just, yeah, just, so the city can't make them remediate if remediation is called for? Did I understand that correctly?
No, sir, you're misunderstanding that. If remediation is called for, we can absolutely make it happen, up to and including stopping all other work until it's done. And if it's still not done, then we do have the ability to find the developer until it is, and, you know, take every legal action necessary if it comes to that. At this point, the developer is trying to be an active participant and doing everything that they can. They don't want to harm the environment any more than we want it harmed. But yeah, the city is an MS4, and the permitting authority on it, and we have all the tools in the toolbox that we can use if necessary.
Thanks, Mike. Keep an eye on that for us, too. If you see anything else that's known, Gus is going to be watching on it, watching it real close, too. Any other public comments? Going once, going twice?
David, can I just speak to that for a moment? And Charlie, one question before I say what I wanted to say. Does he have any kind of bond posted at all for any damage he may cause?
I'm quite certain that the contractor does, has performance bonds. I mean, that's usually kind of status quo and stuff like that, but as far as bonding and whatnot with the city...
Right. Yeah, so the developer won't bond anything until they're going for final plats with us, which right now, they've only got preliminary plat approval. So, but we have the, I mean, it's a reputable company. It's a good company that's doing the work. Yeah, I wouldn't call them a fly-by-night. They're probably one of the top grading contractors in York County that was hired to do the work. But again, we're monitoring it on a daily basis, you know, as is the developer's got folks on site in addition to the contractor. They've also got third-party engineers that are coming in, not just their own engineers. Everybody's got an active eye on it, doing everything that can be done to keep it out of the creek, keep it out of the lake.
All right.
No doubt.
Mike, just so you know, obviously, I live over there, too. So when the rain started, I was out there, as were you, you know, in walking around, taking pictures, getting samples, and every time I would reach out to Charlie, and we've had many conversations about it, he's very responsive, had staff out there constantly, had our people out there, and the developer brought in some people, too. So it's being looked at heavily and monitored, and I'm going to keep doing it. I mean, that was one of my promises when I was running, that's something that I was going to look after, and I assure you, I'm going to keep doing it.
Yeah, he called me on the first rain, I think, maybe the first or second rain, started sending emails out, so, and Charlie got right after it. All right, item number two are the approval of minutes. Council has read the minutes. Is there any changes or deletions you want to make? Seeing none, hearing none, the minutes stand as published. Item number three is committee reports. First will be the Planning Commission.
Excellent. Well, thank you for the opportunity to talk about the Planning Commission meeting. We just had ours last week, last Monday, on the 7th, and really just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. One, council, I feel like you're pretty well aware of it, and thank you, Charlie, for the email you sent, just recapping everything in terms of the updates that are forthcoming on the comprehensive plan. So we had the Catawba Regional Cog came, and Susan, thank you, as well, came and presented their proposed plan and the timeline for getting that done over the course of the next 12 months. The kickoff meeting's tentatively scheduled for our February meeting, and so I think that's being finalized with a workshop prior to the, with a joint planning and city council meeting, or workshop prior to the start of this meeting. In addition to that, in the first quarter, there'll be a steering committee meeting and focus group formations. The second quarter, the focus groups will start to meet in March and April, and then again in October. They usually take a break over the summer. So those are really the big things to be just mindful of right now. We also discussed, briefly discussed, the bike, pedestrian, master plan maps, and just one change that happened from the prior commission meeting. And then the next meeting to occur is going to be on February 4th. So if anyone's interested in coming, those meetings are here in this very room, and they start at 6:30. Thank you.
Any questions, council? From the public, any questions? All right, we'll move to the next, is TAK Forever Foundation. Heather?
Okay. The TAK Forever Foundation met this past Tuesday. Typically, they meet Mondays, the first Monday of every month. We had a scheduling conflict, so we met Tuesday on the 8th. The main topic of conversation and will be for the next couple of months is the business gala that will be happening on Thursday, March 7th, so a lot of planning and coordination going into that to garnish sponsorships for the park. That's the ultimate goal for that. Talked about, a lot about marketing. We have a lot of our marketing finalized now. I'm excited to get that out there eventually, so that the public can see it. We'll present that information for the first time at the gala on the 7th, and then from there, hopefully, we can disseminate some of the really cool things that are happening. They also discussed a communication plan, so, okay, now we have this great sign out there, and it says, "Coming in 2019," but what happens between now and then? So making sure that we're continually updating our residents and the public, so that they know what's going on, and that it continues, and people don't think, you know, it'll be another 10 years for us to get there. And then finally, the calendar of events, so really, how are they going to be engaging with the community this year, and what events are they going to be attending? So pretty much any public event that we have going on within the city, our food truck rallies, our 4th of July events, Fall Festival, things like that, they're going to have a tent set up and be participants in that, to make sure that they're giving that feedback to the residents. So that's about what's going on, and probably will be next month, too, just so you know.
Thank you. Are there any questions from anybody? All right, well, let's move on to item number four, new business. Item number 4A is the acceptance of streets of Serenity Point. The developer of Serenity Point has petitioned the city to accept into the city's ownership for maintaining its all rights of way of Calming Way, Placid Court, Reliance Court, Stonecrest Boulevard, and all associated infrastructure as shown on Serenity Point plat number two. The streets and infrastructure to be dedicated has been inspected by the city engineering operations. In addition, the city attorney has reviewed and approved the title indeed, and all affidavits and release of liens.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the acceptance of Calming Way, Placid Court, Reliance Court, Stonecrest Boulevard, and related infrastructure in Serenity Point.
I have a motion by Gus Machinas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Are there any questions before we vote?
I have one question for the city manager. Charlie, can you briefly just describe how we're, since we're taking over a lot of roads here, and I know that we do this often, but Stonecrest Boulevard is, seems like a pretty active road. It has a lot more traffic than normal. Are we doing anything different now that we've got Stonecrest Boulevard, or we're planning on having them, in terms of preparing for resurfacing in future years? I know that's out, quite a distance away.
At this point, doing anything different? No, ma'am, other than what we typically do, just keeping an eye on things. As time marches on, we'll start to see, we call it alligator cracking, and we'll monitor that, you know, start pothole patching, things of that nature. And then as it looks to get, as it starts to get near the time for resurfacing, that's when we'll be targeting that for, with C funds projects to resurface as we move forward. Typically, that's what we do with any of our streets. Yes, Stonecrest Boulevard, the entire stretch of it, obviously, you've got four lanes on one end and two lanes on the other. You know, that's, we'll maintain that through our normal street maintenance, through our Public Works Department on an annual basis. You know, hopefully, you know, generally, if we can keep up with it, as far as the potholes and things of that nature, some patching here and there, it should prolong the life of it. But, you know, roads that size, we'll tackle as C funds projects when the time comes to resurface those.
Any other questions? Are there any questions from the audience? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Item 4B, this is introduction and first reading of an amendment to the Stonecrest Development The current property owners of partial number 644-11-01-111 designate as the courtyards of TAK on the development master plan have petitioned the city to amend the Stonecrest Plan Development District, PDD, development standards to permit and regulate age-restricted communities as a designated use in the residential high-density RHD districts. The Planning Commission has developed and recommends specific development standards applicable to all such designated properties within the Stonecrest Plan Development District. Did that make sense? Okay. Any comments or questions? None? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to add one.
Yes, sir.
When you're, whoever's going to make the motion in section two, I'd just like to add at the end of that sentence, a comma after the districts, and put "as described" in exhibit A here, too, which is incorporated herein by reference. You can just refer to what I said in your motion if you want. And then before the second read, we'll have it typed in. So again, "as described in exhibit A here, too," which is incorporated by reference herein. And that's, and what that is, is it's in your packet, it's just the actual verbiage. I just want to make sure that it's part of the ordinance, is all I'm asking.
All right, well, whoever's going to make that motion, do you have?
I'll help him out.
You wrote it in.
Go, Ryan.
Only got "as described" and quit writing. First, are there any questions?
I'll add it on, fine, to your motion, if you want to make it.
Are there any questions or comments?
You can just refer to me.
From either the council or the public? Now, Ryan, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an amendment to the Stonecrest Plan Development District as described.
Section two is amended to provide this at the end of the sentence, "as described in exhibit A here, too," which is incorporated by reference herein.
What he said. What he said. Does he ever have to say all that?
It'll be in print in front of you.
Sorry?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're good for the next.
Okay. Now, do we have any questions or comments? From the audience, any? I have a motion by Ryan Richard. Yes, sir.
Second.
Well, he's getting me.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I get a second?
I seconded that, that was incredible.
Gus seconds is for the effort, I think. Now I have a second from Gus Machinas. Now, are there any other comments? Hearing none? It's time to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
One opposed. Four to one, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to 4C. Okay, 4C, the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to relinquish any rights of the city of TAK to provide water and sewer service to TMS 644-11-01-111, which is inside the municipal limits of the city of TAK. Because it's a York County water and sewer service on this undeveloped property, and the city's infrastructure is not immediately adjacent to the property, the developer has requested the city allow the county to provide the service to this 45-home development. In order to do so, the city must first relinquish its service area to the county. This is the first, this is for the same project discussed in the previous agenda items. Got that right. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to relinquish any rights of the city of TAK to provide water and sewer service to TMS 644-11-01-111, which is inside the municipal limits of the city.
I have a motion by Gus Machinas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Are there any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. So I was a no vote for the prior action, I will be a no vote for this one as well, and...
It's not a good poker face.
Thanks. I'm not very good at poker. I'm not a good poker face. So my intent's not to be difficult, and I am empathetic to the developer, but in a city where growth has been an issue and land is hard to come by, I don't see a need to approve an exception, or relinquish any of our rights as a city for residential development. I feel like, if anything, we need to take a hard stance with developers, and from what I've heard with, from community members all along, is that there's not a need for additional residential housing, and that we need to get control over the population growth. And so I don't think that it's, in my opinion, I just don't feel like it's in the city's best interest to relinquish any rights at this time, so just wanted to state that for the record.
Well, just for the record, this doesn't change the growth pattern at all, that's, they're already approved for houses.
I understand that.
So those houses are coming either way.
Can I make a comment?
Sorry?
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
I will also be a no vote tonight, not necessarily because of the growth, but I feel that it sets a precedent for developers. If you want to buy land within the city, you should know the ramifications that it comes with prior to purchasing it, and our water is to be used, and if you'd like to use it somewhere else, then that's up to you all, so.
Any other comments? Any comments from the audience? All right, time to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Two, three to two. Motion passes. Okay, this is the Amendment to Wastewater Agreement with the city of Rock Hill. The city's current agreement with this, with Rock Hill provides that Rock Hill is the sole sewer provider for the city, other than what is being treated at the city, in the city at our treatment plants. The amendment allows for the city to also utilize York County to transport wastewater from Wind Haven and other future areas along the Gold Hill Road corridor. This will save an additional lift stations and sewer lines that the city would otherwise be responsible for maintaining. So this has nothing to do with our previous amendments, right? Okay, this is completely separate. All right, I'll entertain a motion. Can we get a little background on this real quick, Charlie?
Yes, sir. So the Wind Haven subdivision is a, it's in an area that we don't have close proximity for water and sewer. This is step one of several agreements that will be coming forth to council in the coming months, but basically, the county needs a place to do a regional lift station to handle their sewer capacity needs. They've identified a section where Wind Haven and Palmetto West are adjoining, but it would be inside the city limits. So those agreements are coming, but what this does is allows us, through Wind Haven, to put sewer into that regional lift station and go through the county's lines to Rock Hill. Otherwise, developer has to build additional lift stations that eventually get deeded over to the city, additional linear feed, a sewer line that has to be installed, yeah, at the developer's expense, but again, that infrastructure ends up becoming the city's for us to maintain.
And handcuffed to Rock Hill only.
Do I?
I said, and handcuffed to Rock Hill only, in that scenario?
Handcuffed to Rock, I...
We, Rock Hill would be our only provider.
Right now, they, right now, Rock Hill is our only provider. So this amendment just allows us for this area to send it through York County, and the future, and additional areas that are outside of Wind Haven, that are in that gray area on the exhibit, it allows, it will allow those to go through Wind Haven as well. So basically, the win for the city is less infrastructure for us to have to maintain down the road, and by being able to send it through the county to Rock Hill, instead of directly to Rock Hill, which also frees up capacity in our system that's going to Rock Hill as well.
And the county will have to maintain the lift station and the lines.
That is correct. It'll be our responsibility up until the point of the lift station, and then from the lift station forward, it'll be the county's. That is correct.
Cool, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now we'll entertain a motion. Anyone?
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Amendment to Wastewater Agreement with city of Rock Hill.
I have a motion from Alicia Dash. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Are there any questions, additional questions or comments? Any from the audience? All right, it's time to vote. All in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. 4E is discussion regarding crosswalks on TAK Drive. At the council's direction, the city manager, Mayor Pro Tem Overman, and council member Dash, met with local SCDOT traffic engineer and the director of traffic engineering for the state in December. Various options were discussed at the meeting, and Mayor Pro Tem Overman has shared that discussion with the rest of the city council. The purpose of this item being on the agenda is to allow council to discuss this publicly and discuss what direction we want to go with the city manager. You're taking it?
Yeah, I'll take it. Need to make a motion for this?
If I can, before we get into any type of motion, just for the public's education, if I can, something that SEDOT's traffic engineer informed us of when we met is an option that wasn't previously available to us. Federal Highway's actually just adopted it. It's so new that they haven't even added it to what they call their MUTCD. It's basically the bible for traffic control for DOT. But we can get a waiver. Charleston has already done one. It's basically a rubber stamp at this point, and the only reason the waiver would be needed is because it hasn't been added to the manual yet. Once it's added to the manual, it's just a simple permit through SEDOT. What we're talking about is, and I've got images up on the screen, it's called a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. You can see, it mounts to the poles that are already there. It's solar-powered. Those two lights, LED lights, flash back and forth once a button is pushed at the pole. The models that I have found thus far, you're looking at anywhere between eight and 10 grand to do an entire crosswalk, both sides of the crosswalk in the median, and they're synced together wirelessly, so we don't have to cut up the pavement or anything like that. Pedestrian pushes the button, a voice box comes on telling them that the lights have been activated, please wait for the cars to stop before entering the crosswalk, and those things stay flashing to give the pedestrian enough time to cross over. So wanted to, wanted to let council see exactly what was being discussed, what DOT actually now approves. The in-ground lighting and things like that, they don't have it anywhere, they're not fans of it, but this has started popping up in areas like Charleston, and would, could be approved if this is the direction council wanted to go. And I'll leave it at that and let you all discuss, but did want to get that up on the screen, so everybody could see what was being talked about.
No motion yet, it's just discussion. And Heron Harbor, is there, what's the reason for choosing Heron Harbor? I know you hadn't discussed it yet, so I'm sure you'll clarify that.
Yeah, let me kind of give an overall, just so the public's aware of kind of the meeting and what we discussed, so that everybody's kind of on the same page, and then we can get into specifics. So in the past year, signage and site distances have both been updated on TAK Drive, so there have been improvements that have been done, while not specifically in the crosswalks, just along the road in general. They indicated, you know, a lot of people say, "Oh, maybe we should reduce the speed limit," something like that. 35 is the speed limit, and they believe that it should remain as such for now, based on the traffic patterns and how things are moving. So I know Charlie mentioned the rapid flashing beacons, they gave us a lot of other options. Some are more expensive than others, roadway lighting, impavement flashers, which they did not recommend, speed flashback signs, so kind of like a speed limit sign, but it flashes your speed limit, almost like, you know how they have the radar tracker, yes, but this wouldn't actually track your radar specifically or issue you a ticket, it was, it would just be to notify you of your speed. All of these options, we would be required, responsible for the installation and maintenance of those. Some of the studies that have been done, so even if we do implement any of these options, studies have shown that motorist compliance increases, so that cars will actually stop, but confusion among pedestrians goes down. And so we want to make sure that if we are improving our crosswalks, that we're also continuing that pedestrian safety and education piece, so that people don't just become numb to it because there's flashing beacons, and they go out in the middle of the road. So that's something we want to be wary of as well. So yes, we discussed kind of the rapid flashing beacons the most, they are activated by pedestrians. Spartanburg and Charleston are the areas that they operate those, these mostly in. SEDOT thinks that this would be our best option, based on the street and the patterns that we have. that we have. And let's see, what else? Yeah, that's probably, pretty much it. I think you talked about them specifically. So we talked about the reason why this has become such a topic, right? Why, why have we got to this point to begin with? A lot of it has to do, I think, with the additional children in the school. Because the school is now at capacity, we have 250 plus more children going to T A K Elementary School. At the beginning of the year, the buses were maxed to capacities, like three to four to a seat in the buses, and so a lot of parents ended up taking their children off the buses, walking them to school, riding their bikes. So we have a lot more pedestrian traffic before and after school times. And so a lot of parents and just residents in general, this, this topic continued to come up. Residents were contacting us to do something. Now, I will say that S C D O T did mention that T A K Drive sidewalks, I'm not talking about T A K Drive in itself, but T A K Drive's crosswalks, I'm sorry, are 98% more effective than anywhere else in the state. So we aren't doing a terrible job. Things are going well. We haven't had any incidents. They track 18-month periods of time, so in the past 18 months, there haven't been any incidents. But, you know, we want to make sure that we're, we're listening to what our residents are saying, and if we think we can do a little bit better job, maybe that's what we do. Heron Harbor was discussed because we do have the most kids crossing at that crosswalk, and because the currently, the sidewalk is closed in front of the police station, they're not able to route down, pass, and go cross its shoreline, which would be the most obvious next choice because we have the traffic light there. So with so many kids coming from that vicinity, that makes the most sense right now, based on the conditions that we have.
And that was the plan? But, so we're going to give it a try at this one crosswalk and see what, how much safer? I mean, we don't, we don't have a lot of data to face it against because we hadn't had any incidents.
Correct. I, I think it's really just to monitor, get feedback. Yeah, I think every time there's a quote-unquote near miss, I think all of y'all hear about it almost immediately. I know our police department gets a lot of calls as well, and really not much that they can do after the fact, so to speak. So really just kind of monitoring that side of things to see, are we still getting those calls at that crosswalk? Are we still getting that type of feedback? Plus, I mean, as, as I say, this is like an eight to $10,000 expense. We can fit it in our Public Works budget. I wouldn't want to do more than that if we're going to do something kind of midstream budget year, but plan on maybe trying to do the Trail Ridge, Seven Co's, and the Windjammer one in the coming fiscal year, or if the budget overperforms this year, maybe doing it later in the fiscal year. But this is something that if, if council chooses to move forward, that within the coming month or so, we could have at least one up. So of the three, we also kicked around the idea of at some point maybe eliminating the Amber, we call it the Amber Woods Crosswalk, it kind of runs diagonally, it's a mid-block crossing. It was installed before there were signalization at Shoreline Parkway. Now folks that come out of Amber Woods, you know, they can go down to where they have the, the crosswalk and the, and the, the lights and things like that. Maybe at some point getting rid of that. It's an, relatively expensive to, to wipe that out. So leaving it for now, targeting Heron Harbor, kind of monitoring that, getting feedback from folks, yeah, and seeing, seeing what that looks like, and then make a plan for the 1920 fiscal year as to what that next step is. Is it doing Trail Ridge and, and Windjammer and eliminating the Amber Woods one? Is it leaving Amber Woods and doing all three? Yeah, and just having those conversations part of the budget process. But I think if council likes to do one, or wants to move forward this year, my recommendation would just be to do the one because it is about 10 grand to do.
And you get what for 10 grand? Two signs?
You're gonna, you're gonna get a sign on either side, plus in the middle with the, with the rapid flashing, solar power, the whole bit, they'd be connected. Yes, sir.
So, I'm sorry, was that put out to bid or?
No, that's, that, that is just pricing that we have found from contractors that, that are in this market. So I, I know we can go, do it for 10. If council approves it, obviously, we're going to find something a little less expensive if we can and start getting quotes.
And that was, I like the way you're thinking. That was my thought, too, and I'm open to suggestion, guys, but how many crosswalks do we have on T A K Drive? Six?
You've got Amber Woods, Heron Harbor, Trail Ridge, Windjammer, Callaway, five.
And the one up by Rundy Field.
That one technically doesn't go across T A K Drive. That's a windward drive crosswalk.
Okay. But just, just point is, obviously, move forward with, you know, your permits and what we need to get in the pipeline to get this thing done, but to me, it would make more sense to put this out to bid for five crosswalks or four crosswalks.
What about?
Obviously, you're, you're getting a better price by buying in bulk or buying in volume, so to speak, but be able to expand it out over time. You know, wherever it falls into the budget to meet it, but I think we could have a better price point on the product by number one, putting it out to bid, but number two, having...
Seems like we're only paying attention to T A K Drive. What about Stonecrest Boulevard and Garden Dale and all those areas over there, any crosswalks?
I think the issue would be, because this would be coming out of Public Works funding that's already in, set aside for the budget. If we wanted to pursue things going forward, that would probably be a C funds request, but that's already been requested for the, no, you can't use them for that? Just sidewalks and things like that? No.
It would have to, I mean, I, I don't disagree as far as a large scale, trying to put it out for bid. I mean, this, this pricing is us, our staff installing it. This is just buying the material, having it shipped here and then we install. If council wants to go a bid route and try to tackle as many as we can, obviously, we can put it out for bid, see what that looks like, bring it back to council. I would be nervous trying to tackle a, a full-scale project mid, mid fiscal year. We're only a third into, one quarter of the fiscal year at this point. I think something that large scale should probably be phased in over, over a plan. These are the ones we're going to do first, second, third, and this is how long it's going to take. But if, if a RFP is what council wants, I mean, we can obviously get, get working on generating that and pushing it out. That's not a problem.
Perhaps to your point, maybe in the RFP and, and knowing that we don't have all the money upfront to do it, maybe in the RFP, we can say that the proposal allows for multi-year funding or something like that, so we don't have to purchase it all, but maybe we can still enter into contract with the intent of, or the intent to.
I'm curious how we, how did we get here? I mean, if we're, if our crosswalks already meet the 98th percentile and...
Because you have a lot more people crossing than you did last year.
I mean, that's a great solution to a problem we don't have, it seems like.
That's where somebody gets mapped by a car.
Well, I mean, that's always going to be the case. Let's put up meteorite guards or something. I mean, everything could happen. I just don't see it where there's a problem. I mean, our, seems like our crosswalks are working just fine for 10,000 times five or eight, whatever number's going to be.
Well, I know that this initially, well, in, in addition to hearing from it from people throughout the community, feeling that they're unsafe, myself sometimes driving down the road and it's nighttime, and I can't see when people are crossing on the left side, or there's a car stopped on the, on the road, and you don't know why they're stopped, and you're maybe in the other lane, but they can see that, they can see that there's someone coming, but you can't see as you're coming around that bend, especially over by Windjammer. I, I do feel like there are, there are safety situations, and I, I think that having something that would notify people, like lighted crosswalks or signage would be very beneficial, especially at night. There's a lot of trees, there's a lot of curves, there's a lot of hills on our road, and they all are mid-block crossings.
And since that's difficult, too, coming in.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I've lived here 18 years, and I've never heard anybody say anything about a crosswalk. I mean, I drive the same road you ride, drive.
I'll, I'll also add that...
I mean, people know how to get in touch with me. They call me because their trash can fell over. They call me because the sprinklers are left on at the golf course, or there's a, a branch that fell down in the middle of the, I mean, they call me for everything. Not one time has anybody ever called me about a crosswalk.
I think several.
I, I have two questions, and one of them may be for, for Bob. If we make a decision to put these at one intersection, and you guys always talk about liability, God forbid somebody gets hit in an unlighted intersection, an unlighted crosswalk. Is that a concern?
Hard to say. Anytime somebody gets hit, it's a concern.
Yeah.
Because I think it just depends on the facts and circumstances. I, I, I don't have a black and white answer to that.
And the other would be maybe, I, I don't know the rules. If we vote on this now, I mean, obviously, it's a yes or no. If it's no, is it tabled for a year?
No.
Or could it be brought back up?
The people who voted no could bring it back up. Is, are these located anywhere where we can see them? How functional they are? Can we drive over and...
I can reach out to, to Spartanburg's city manager.
Is that the closest one there is in Spartanburg?
Spartanburg's closest. I can, I can reach out and get some videos slash...
There's nothing anywhere close to us.
They're brand new.
Sorry?
They're brand new.
Oh. And no other options? There's not a $2,000 option or?
There may be. I've just, I, I, I'm not asking you to spend 10,000. I'm saying that I know I can get one done for 10,000. I might be able to get more done. My thought was, you know, let, let's install one, see what kind of feedback we get before we go start trying to do them all this way, to see if it, does it have an effect? Is it positive? Is it negative? You know, that type thing before we start doing multiple crosswalks all over the place. That was, that was my thought, but obviously happy to go whichever direction council wants to go with it.
I'd like more information.
So I, I do just want to make sure I point out and, and recognize the Planning Commission because this did come up at one of the Planning Commission meetings when they were talking about the pedestrian bicycle master plan. There were several speakers that night that came up and spoke about their concerns with the crosswalks, which then, there was some discussion throughout the Planning Commission, which then ultimately came to a recommendation that the Planning Commission was asking us to, to take a look at. So I know that there were speakers then that came out publicly spit, spoke as well. But there is, there, there are examples of things like this. At the Charlotte Airport, I took, actually took a video of one. It's not the same exact model, but if you were to drive over to the Business Valet area, there's another mid-block crossing right there where a lot of people cross from the parking deck over to the administrative building, and there is an example right there. Anyone can go see it. Took a video of it, if anyone's interested.
At the airport?
Mm-hmm. At the Charlotte Airport.
Yeah, send me that link.
Yeah.
I'd like to look at it. Anybody else have any discussion?
I'll also say that S C D O T, they're going to put reflectors on all of our crosswalk poles. Yeah. So they're going to be doing that if they haven't already. I haven't noticed them, so I don't think they've done it.
They have not.
Okay.
They have not. But I was wondering, I mean, do we have to, I mean, can, can you just, do we have to have an official motion, Charlie? Or, I mean, can't you just go out and put a RFP out there to see, you know, to find out what proposal, what people can do in terms of improving?
I can absolutely do an RFP and bring those results back to council. I don't need a motion to do that. Based on the conversation from the S C D O T meeting, that's why I brought this, but if council wants to see something else, if, you know...
Well, I think a combination of the two. The, the RFP and hey, here's what the parts and pieces and the kit costs, obviously, city staff can install it.
Mm-hmm. And if there's any alternatives, it's like, it's a 10,000 per or nothing? It seems like we should have one, A, B, and C, you know?
With, with the lights, the, the voice box.
Well, no, if we want this one, but aren't there other things available, too? Does it have to be?
I can, I can scale, I can scale this one down and get it down to about $1,800 without the, the voice box, you know, things like that. It's just the button.
That's what I'm talking about.
I mean, it, it, it can be, it can be dumbed down.
I like 18 more than I like 10,000.
Well, 18 per pole.
Yeah.
Instead of 2500.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
That's a little bit better, but, I mean, but there's no other alternatives, but this?
Well, I mean, you could get into the, the power ones, but that's going to be more expensive.
Well, obviously, I know.
Solar power, they're all, they're...
Anything cheaper than 10,000 per?
The manufacturers that, that send us stuff, they were all right there in the relatively same spot.
Oh, so how many?
On a solar power.
How many people sent you things?
We get emails from probably four or five different companies on a constant basis.
Can you send me some of those?
Want to sell us all kinds of stop signs, safety equipment, the whole bit.
Okay, let me be more specific. On crosswalks, how many people have some kind of product that we can use in a crosswalk?
I know of at least four or five, but I'm sure there's lots of...
Can we look at, can we, can we be presented with those and see if they're less than $10,000 per, per apparatus, per side, per crosswalk? So we'll have some kind of choice instead of just saying, here it is, take it or leave it for $10,000.
Well, if, if I can, I'll go back. I'm not looking to spend $10,000. The $10,000, I know from one company, I can get one crosswalk done. Obviously, if council says, yes, we like the rapid flashing beacons, we want to, we want to move forward, let's do this at, at Heron Harbor and, and try that out, we're going to start soliciting companies and, and try to get that price down. Absolutely. We're not just going to go with the one company that, hey, this guy's got it, it's 10 grand. But yeah, I can, I can get you the quotes. I can get you quotes from lots of companies.
Not just on, I think, you call them rapid fire beacons?
Rapid flashing beacons, yes, sir.
Rapid, not just rapid flash, all are turn, all are alternatives. What can we do that people want to make these things safer, that are something different than the rapid fire flash things here? I mean, it seems like we're only...
Options, options.
Yeah, what's the alternate options? That's all I'm asking.
I think the other options that, that Heather mentioned that came from D O T was actually doing overhead lighting to illuminate the crosswalks more so that people could see them at night.
Well, I think, I think we need to study this a bit more. If you can bring us more information, then I think that's probably more options. It seems like, it's like, here, take it or leave it, and if that's the case, I'm leaving it. So I'd like for, to see more options for all of us to look at. Okay? That shouldn't be...
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to discuss? Nope. All right.
Are we doing an RFP or not? Or just looking at materials?
No, he's going to go, he's going to go bring us other options rather than the all or none.
Well, if he, if he puts it out to bid, then couldn't we, could we make the RFPs broad enough where, like, the experts that are, the companies that, you know, make recommendations on this is the, the best option for you in this area, if these are your concerns? And then they could say, we recommend this option at this intersection, this option at this intersection, or crosswalk, crosswalk, and these are the costs. This is what this one would cost, this is what this option would cost, this is what this option would cost, and then there, there we are, we have options and real pricing that we can...
Yeah, just options, that's fine. Anything that's an option that we don't have to just, yes, it's either a yes or a no. Having said, having seen only one option, this is it, this is the only product you can say yes to, and I'm sure there's other products, there's other...
No, it's just the only one that S C D O T recommended, based on our street topography situation.
So perhaps in the RFP, we can say something about having to meet S C D O T's, like, codes or laws, so whatever, whatever they're recommending has to meet, has to be applicable.
I think he understands. You got it right. You don't understand.
Am I bringing y'all back options, or am I putting this out for RFP and coming? If it's options, I can bring you back your options at your March, at your February 19th meeting. If I'm doing an RFP, it's at your March meeting, before you've got the RFP back.
Well, don't you, don't we need to tell you what to put in the RFP?
I was hearing, come tell us what's going to be the best at each one.
Why don't we talk about it the February 19th? I think we're all still confused. You got two different, three different things going on. I don't understand.
I mean, I can push out an RFP within the next week or so.
Of where we're going with this? Would that be suitable? Just send us more information between now and then so we'll have something to discuss. I don't, I don't understand why we have one choice.
Okay.
At $10,000, okay?
Yes, sir.
Does that appeal to everybody? Is that okay? Okay, let's go to item five, City Manager's Report. Charlie Fundaburk. Sure, come on up. I'm sorry. State your name, address, and blood type.
Timothy Reading, 7100 Anchorage Lane. In the November City Council meeting at Public Comment, the question was asked, had there ever been any incidences? And you brought that up as well, and the answer was no.
Norm Snyder brought it up, I think, yeah.
And my question, two questions here, but first is, have there been any near misses? I think we all know the answer to that question. There's lots of...
I guess it depends on who you ask.
I think if you asked, the majority of people would say there's been near misses. And to the other point of, you know, is it a problem, we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist? Well, yeah, there have been no incidences here in terms of contact or someone being hit, but there also were no incidences at all in Baxter on Sutton Road until there was. And I don't think we should wait until after something happens to go back and do something if we can be proactive about it, because there are certainly a lot of, I personally witnessed near misses, so maybe I'm just being...
So, should we put in six, six of these right now?
I think we should discuss it, absolutely.
Well, that's what we're doing.
I agree. I'm just, I want you to know that, at least for me and people that I talk to, this is an issue of concern.
We're just trying to find out why we only have one choice. Why is all of a sudden, I mean, I've lived here 20 years, like I said, I've never heard a thing about it, and people call me about everything. Fleas in the yard, I've got calls on.
Just because we've all done it one way doesn't mean it's the right way.
I know, but now we're talking about spending 60 or 80,000.
I, yup.
So, as a steward of your money, I just wanted to make sure I got all the answers before we vote on it.
That is appreciated.
That's all I'm asking. I'm not saying we're not gonna do it, but I'm saying I don't have enough information to make a decision tonight. First, first time I've heard, seen all these numbers, heard all this, first time I've seen that, 10 minutes after we've done that, I'm gonna go ahead and try to make this happen for a 10 to 60,000 dollar outlet.
I'm not making the argument to vote for it right now. I'm just giving you feedback from the public that this, and from at least this one person's point of view, this is an issue that needs to be addressed and would be worth spending money on.
It's your money. If that's what you want to spend it on, we'll spend it on it.
That and pickpocket courts.
Yep. Oh, yeah, nothing's free.
All right, thank you.
Come on up, Kathy.
Hey there, Kathy Masters, 4072 Point Clear, and I definitely think you need to be educated
on it. I think we need to see lots of different alternatives, but I think it's very important. We didn't used to have a school right at the entrance of Tegu K and we do now. There are a lot of children walking. One child's life is worth it, but not $10,000 per intersection. I'm 100% with you there, so, but I do think there are options, and I like the flashing lights because as a driver, I'm gonna see them, even if I'm not thinking about the fact that I'm coming up to an intersection, if it starts flashing, it is gonna get my attention, and that's important.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thanks for those good comments. Now, item five, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As a reminder, Hometown Legislative Action Day is coming up on February 5th in Columbia. I know a few of y'all are also going through the municipal elected officials training that'll be held the following day, so looking forward to that, coming up and spending time with our state elected folks on February 5th. City offices are gonna be closed on next Monday, January 21st for Martin Luther King Day, as well as Monday, February 18th for President's Day, and I just bring that one up because that's before our next regular meeting. Council, really for the public, council's gonna be holding a workshop on Saturday, February 2nd, 2019, on strategic goals and objectives. That is a Saturday morning, and that agenda will be published here pretty soon. You have published it? Yeah, so we'll be getting that out. Department heads have been working on initiatives coming from council's planning session from this past spring, and we're gonna be bringing those initiatives for council for hopefully a good conversation on that. As council is where we are doing the required update to our comprehensive plan, as Ms. Dash mentioned earlier in the meeting. As part of that process, council and Planning Commission will be holding a kickoff meeting at 6:30 PM on February 19th here in the chambers. That's gonna be just prior to our regular February city council meeting. And council, just as a reminder, if you haven't done so already, just email Susan with which committees you're able to or would like to serve on as, for the update, based on the email I sent out last week. Two more things, I'm gonna start with the not-so-good one and then the good one. So, the not-so-good one, right now, we are currently behind on revenues as compared to this time last year. This is primarily due to the tax bills going out late November instead of in mid-October as they normally do. That, and with all the rain, we're behind on building inspections and business license because our development and construction activity has basically been at a standstill for the most part. I think it's been raining since Labor Day. York County tells us that we should see a big jump in tax revenues in January to make up the shortfalls from November and December, and then once we get into drier weather, we're anticipating construction activities picking up significantly, which should raise those building inspection, business license fees and getting that revenue where it should be. Just so y'all are aware, as an abundance of caution, we are holding off on any replacement and scheduled new hires, and we're pushing some of our planned projects off until the spring, just to see, you know, make sure that the revenue's coming in where it needs to be. So, basically, it's only mission critical at this point, the things and activities that we're doing and the funds we're spending, but we should know here in the next week or so with that January tax check. If that hits where we're anticipating, then we can, we can breathe a sigh of relief, just letting y'all know that now so that there's no surprises, and we've definitely pumped the brakes pretty hard here as we've gone through the first quarter of the fiscal year. Hopefully, things will right itself. We were not anticipating the tax revenues coming in late the way they're coming in, so everybody's aware of the glitch that the county had there, so that was pretty well publicized.
Charlie, how far behind are we?
About $200,000.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. That's as of the report last week, yes. Now, for the little bit better news. Recycling has been a topic, a big topic lately. The mayor touched on that as well early on. Last week, I think, was a very productive, was very, very productive with meetings. First, we start off with principals at schools here in Tegu K, working with them on some education programs. They educate the kids, kids help educate the parents, that type thing. So, and again, furthering that relationship with our friends at the school district. We also met with York County staff. We're gonna be working with this, York County has agreed to get us a dumpster for sorted glass that'll be located at the public workshop. Hopefully, that's coming in in the coming weeks. They're trying to nail down the vendor, but it's been ordered, it's gonna be delivered, it's gonna look just like what's at the Baxter Convenience Center, so step in the right direction. Will be a trial basis. As long as folks sort the glass the way it's supposed to, county will allow us to keep it and they'll come and collect it, not charging us for it. We start filling it up with trash, not sorting the glass, you know, things like that, that thing can go away just as quickly, if not faster, than what it got here. So, hopefully, people will be on their Ps and Qs, and we'll obviously do a big announcement once, once that is available.
Where did you say we do it?
We'll have it at the Public Works, Public Works site. We figured with Baxter being so close to the eastern side of town and trying to, we don't really have somewhere that's truly centrally located, so for the time being, it'll be down at the public workshop. As we finish the police station and move Public Works and Utilities into the old police station, we may relocate that, you know, a little bit further out off the peninsula, but for the time being, once we get it, it will be at the public workshop. If, let's see, the county has also verbally agreed, and I want to go ahead and put this out here because I think we and our citizens need a bit of good news when it comes to recycling. The county has agreed in principle that they will allow our hauler to start going to their recycling facility. We still have to work through the, through the agreement, and that's gonna take a little bit of time, but we're trying to fast-track it. Once we're able to get that in place, your plastics, your aluminums can go back into your curbside carts. Again, you'll still have to take the glass to the, to the sorted dumpster because they're not taking the mixed glass, but plastics of all types, and we'll get deeper into that list during the publication, but really excited that the county is willing to work with us and accept our recycled materials. Ms. Overman and I had the opportunity to visit their massive recycling facility. It's impressive. I encourage you to contact Leslie Hatchell, Allison Woodruff, and the folks out there. If you've got a group, you want to go see it, this is, this is impressive to have something like this here in York County. It's, it's an amazing facility. They're doing a great job with it, and we're looking forward to working with the county. I'm hoping, crossing my fingers, I've got an MOU to bring, bring to y'all February. I'm pushing county management as hard as I can to get that thing written so we can get through it, get it through their council and get it to you guys so that we can begin that process. So, hopefully, by March, knock on wood, we've got some good news coming. So, I felt like with, with everything that's out there on our social media sites and various others, we needed some good news. Need to let folks know, you folks have been working hard, staff has been working hard trying to find options, solutions, and we'll continue with our education plan, but hopefully, we get to start educating on, here's, here's a few more things you can put back into your recycle cart here in the very near distant, near future. So, with that, that's all I've got, Mayor.
Any questions of the city manager? So, let me just ask one question. So, we're working towards putting everything back into the one cart again except for glass.
Except for glass, yes, sir.
That's quite a significant...
Yes, sir.
...achievement there. But we still have the contamination problem, right? If we put other stuff, if we put garbage in there or glass, then we're probably back where we used to be with Sunoco or...
Correct, yes.
Kicked out again. And then we go, we go through this all over again two or three months later.
That is correct. So, hopefully, the education we've been doing up to this point works, and we're gonna continue that education so that folks don't accidentally forget.
I've seen a couple of comments on social media where people have been talking and said, if we put our glass in the can, in our trash, who's gonna know? Like, they think it stops at the, at the curb. It doesn't stop at the curb, it stops at the recycling center. As soon as they see glass in it, it goes to the trash, right? So, everything in there, all the good efforts of all your neighbors to put cardboard and plastic and aluminum cans in this, all that now ends up in the dump because they're not gonna sort through it because of the contamination. Is that how you, how you'd put it?
Basically, yes, sir.
Okay, so, be cognizant of that. Anything else? Any questions? Okay, Ryan, do you have any council comments?
Nope, nothing.
Wow.
I talked enough.
Alicia, how about you?
Happy New Year to everyone, and we've got a lot of work ahead of us, so I'm looking forward to it.
Gus?
Mine's real quick. Charlie, thank you for taking action with that runoff situation, and Heather, I just want to thank you again for all the work with recycling. That's really good news, and thank you for announcing that, Charlie. Other than that, lively meeting, this first, first disagreements we've, we've had so far. This is pretty cool.
They'll still do group hug.
That's what democracy's all about, right? That's it.
They don't group hug me because I'm sick. Heather?
Hurrah for recycling, yay! No, I'm excited.